So it is 7:01 PM on Wednesday, June 22, and I'll call the zoning board of appeals to order. This meeting is being recorded. This is a continued public hearing of the 40B application. I'll call that continued public hearing to order on the application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to be known as a sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 43, Sections 20 to 23, to construct 136-unit apartment complex for which the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16, 2021, at School Street, Assessors Map Number 43, Lot Number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27, 2021. I have with me tonight from the board James Mitchell, John Benares, Brian Solissey, Sean Zahn, Catherine Howe, and Jim Dietrich. And representing Town Council tonight is John Wood. I wanted to start by saying that I have received over 50 letters in the past week or so asking us to deny this application. I will be printing those out and giving them to town to scan and hopefully have them loaded to the website either tomorrow or Monday. I'm being inundated and having difficulties keeping up. So is Mr. Ballmer on the line? Didn't see him.
I am.
Oh, good. Then we will start with the architectural peer review. We have your update received dated June 19, 2022, which we will be operating off of. So that if you can identify the highlights, any outstanding concerns, that would be great.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Indeed, the letter that is in front of you now is the second revision of an original letter that was generated in March, March 21. The second was, second one was in May. And then three days ago, I did submit this. You haven't had a lot of time to look at it, but frankly, there's, there's not a lot of new language in there. I think there are many points that are worthy of discussion, but it, it doesn't have the depth that the other, other letters have had. I think primarily because the submission materials, recently submitted materials, and there was a pretty good handful of new materials that, that I had access to. They have continued to move in the direction that satisfies many of my concerns. I know there are a lot of people listening tonight. I do want to make sure everybody really understands my purview. I, I think I made it clear in, in at least another hearing. I do look very seriously at immediate impact of the development, which is why I've pushed so hard to really understand what the development would look like from the main roadways and near the main roadways. And certainly, I think I've pushed equally hard on quality of life issues for the residents in, in the potential development. And I think in all fairness, I have to say that the developer really has been very responsive to the set of issues that I put in front of the developer. It has moved in the direction of satisfying most requests. I think if you carefully work your way through the, the letter of June 19, most of the content is for details related to the updated renderings. There, I believe there still are some missing elements that I think the board would like to know are actually visible from the primary public realm. And I think there's, there are a number of items that the developer has committed to but are not yet represented in the documentation. And I think it's, for those of you who haven't been through this process before, I think it's important to know that these are critical pieces that, in my opinion, the applicant has committed to through further development of the documents. I think they're very good, very good pieces of information that should this proposal be approved, that they would be conditions on the approval. So I hope when you, when people do read my letter, they understand that is that what I'm pushing for is appreciating movement on the part of the applicant, but making sure that we really ratchet those pieces into place either through modifications to the documents or through conditions to any potential approval of the project. Again, I think the, the latest letter really is kind of detailed analysis of where we are now. I do think there are some important missing pieces in the, in the documentation, you know, in the renderings. I think it's easily correctable. They did ask, or they did provide exactly what I asked for, but I think they left out, at least from the angles I asked for, they left out some of the pieces. There was a revised landscape plan. I would say that probably from a landscaping perspective, for me, one of the most important potential issues has been the, the renderings that we see are done when all of the trees are in full bloom, fully leafed out trees. I did wonder what the view would be in seasons where everything isn't leafed out. And I think it is important that the applicant did commit to four-season visual buffering of the development from the views that they've represented. And I think that the views that you see in the documentation, those are the views that they own, which is different, I think. And I think it is important for the, for the public to understand that everyone is entitled to present their idea of what the views may be. But what really matters is what's in the record and what the developer has committed to providing. Those are record documents, and the board and the public has every right to expect those to be accurate. So the, the renderings that are provided by the applicant are the ones that are of the primary interest to me because I consider them to be commitments made by the applicant and materials that are fully available for conditions on any potential approval of the development. I'm anxious to see the public comment. Usually in my reviews, I, typically in my reviews, I do look at, at everything that comes across. There are certain technical issues that are really beyond my ability to add any value to the review. But certainly, public comment is something I do care about. And I look forward to understanding issues beyond what I may have already seen in a lot of the comments. It's already been submitted and posted. I am happy to say that I think an issue that was, just picking a couple of points from my letter, in the realm of, of what has been committed to but not necessarily thoroughly documented has been an accessible path that does lead all the way down to School Street, independent from whether or not the town actually builds sidewalks to get to the site. To me, that is critical and important. And actually, given that the board can't override state statute, I think it's the right way, right way that this project should go. There's some missing documentation that hugely significant of the pump house, the bus shelter drawings. I did, kind of unusually, but then I would urge the board to review the materials that were submitted, given the, the potential aesthetics of the retaining walls. The retaining walls are hugely visible from the public realm. The applicant did submit two different finishes to these retaining walls. I think there is this significant difference between the two from my own opinion, but I would urge the board to look at that and opine on that from their perspective. I, the other, probably one of the more important, because as I've said, I do really think it's critical to understand what the resident experience of the development would be. And to me, the programming in, the developer has moved a long ways in, in providing programmable open space on the top of the hill, which I think is critical, given the, the kind of logistical issues of connecting with other available green spaces. I think for me, understanding the programming, I'm specifically interested in programming because I think there is space that can be programmed easily for very young children, which, as we all know, are often more difficult to transport than other children. But otherwise, I, I think that's probably the, the quick cherry picking from my own report. I will make one comment that I think goes outside. It's near the end of my report. I'd recommended that the applicant look at methods for connecting to existing trail systems in the town. The applicant responded saying that there didn't appear to be a lot of interest in that. I think that's kind of disappointing. These potential residents of the town, I think to whatever degree the board could advocate for expanding that trail system to include this development, which in my mind would help integrate any potential development into pieces of fabric in the town that people already relate to, would be a very positive thing for this development as for the residents of Manchester by the Sea at large. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I think there, if it, if it makes sense to you, I can condense, and I'm sure there's more testimony coming. But if it makes sense to you, I'm happy to condense this into things that I think are truly outstanding. But I, I think it's in, already in the report. And obviously, I'm here to help you consider potential conditions that could be attached to, to a decision.
Mr. Ballmer, I have a question for you. When you're talking about the nature-themed play area and need for programming for small children, would it make sense that since there's nothing concrete in the drawings that we put in a condition that it needs to be playground appropriate for young children?
I think that is an appropriate condition to, to ensure, you know, understanding the bedroom count and, and, you know, potential population. I, I do think it's appropriate, given that the, the applicant has already expressed interest in providing programmable outdoor space within the confines of the site. I do think it's appropriate to, to request that that address the needs of all ages of children.
The other question I have is, I think that because the building is white, or at least the renderings indicate it's white, that it really sticks out. And I'm wondering if it would blend in more with the scenery and the trails around if it was more nature colored?
Well, thank you for bringing that up. And I apologize, I didn't actually bring that up. There is commentary that I did review from the applicant on the MECT's renderings that pointed out that the color of the building wasn't accurate. And I'm not sure what the color of the building actually is, you know, given the idiosyncrasies of our own printers and computer screens, what the colors actually are. I do think that that is a really good suggestion, particularly given that I think some of, of the evidence that was, or opinions at least that were submitted by other parties with the renderings did, you know, really did make it clear that the way it was rendered did make the building stand out much more than it really needs to. So that's a really good point. I do think that that impact from a more distant perspective could be mitigated through careful consideration of the colors. I apologize for not including that in my letter.
Thank you. I'll now ask for comments from the board. Sean, do you have questions, comments?
Not at the moment.
Okay. James Mitchell?
Yes, I have several comments and some observations as well. And I'll, I'll try to get through them in the interest of time quickly. In each of these, I reference the section and the number and the page number. Item four on page three, which talks about street-level perspectives that have been provided. There are two additional new renderings that have been submitted by the applicant. I was hoping Cliff, the architect, could present those with a screen share tonight. That's the first thing. The second thing is in item 4B on page four. The applicant has agreed to do some new six-foot fencing or extending fencing to protect the retaining wall and sloped areas outside of the open space. This is a good thing. He's also agreed to provide an additional walkway area to the play area to meet ADA requirements. There's also a reference there that the play area does not appear to be programmed for the use of young children, which we've just discussed. On page five, item 5B, the applicant has agreed to the construction of an internal path down to School Street. This was also just mentioned. I think that's an excellent concession and a, and a big amenity and an improvement. He's also agreed to do more buffering between the units in the common area courtyard spaces. That was brought up at a prior meeting. On page five and six, item 5D talks about a revised landscape plan that includes information of proposed planting of the terrace retaining wall visible from School Street. But the reviewer has stated that he continues to believe that a more layered approach versus the wall of Arbor Vitae might be more effective and appropriate. I'd like to maybe get some more details on what the architect is thinking there, so if he could explain that perhaps. On page six, item 5D, the applicant has agreed to provide four-season visual screening for the primary built area from School Street and the surrounding properties. This is also an excellent concession or improvement. On page seven, item F, they have added at our request EV, electronic, you know, for electric car spaces. They've added that. Also on page seven, item 5I, they talk about sustainable sustainability issues. There is a evidence that some of these concessions or details will exceed the stretch code minimum, which is also great. This was talked about in prior reviews. On item, page eight, item 5L, there are more details on a so-called sustainability memo. I have not seen that memo, and I would like to see if that could be shared with us so we have more detail about exactly what the details are. Page eight, five, item 5M. This, I think, is very important. It's a clarification. We've been talking about a construction management plan and a cut-and-fill study, and they're providing more detail at this point that states they believe 100,000 yards of material will be removed from the site versus the 270,000 yards previously estimated. I, I think it's important for the public to know this is 63% less material leaving the site, which means substantially fewer truckloads. Lots of, all that material being hauled off-site is significantly less. I think that's a huge clarification to some of our objections and concerns of earlier. Then, almost done here, item 5N on page nine. The applicant has committed to the construction of a walkway, but he has not, as, as Cliff mentioned, I think his last note was that the applicant states that there's no interest in connecting to the existing trail system. And I think that's something we should discuss and perhaps add as a condition. I'd like to, if there's any explanation why that's not a good idea, I'd like to hear that. And in conclusion, I would like to say that I am very pleased with the process here, the back and forth we've had, both with our expert testimony and reviews and with the public commentary. I do think the developer has been very responsive and is trying sincerely to meet our needs. And I, I applaud him for his efforts. I think we still have a long way to go with, with other concerns and waiver details. But I do think that he should be given credit for the work he's done so far in trying to meet our concerns. And that, that's it for my review of this architectural second review.
Thank you, James. John Benares?
Hi, yes, I'll try to be quick. I, I would agree that the common area programming is, is important for, you know, the potential residents. So I think, I'm glad to see that moving in the right direction. Same goes for the, the landscaping plan. I did not like the prior design that encompassed Arbor Vitae's and a swath of grass leading up to that. So I would, I would rather see a more layered approach with respect to the landscaping. I also would agree that I would, if the project were to be built, that I think it should be integrated with the existing trail system for the benefit of, of residents there. And I would just leave it with, I'm still concerned with the, the cut-and-fill analysis. I, I think at this point, we're still dealing with rough estimates. We've heard, you know, anywhere from 270,000 cubic yards to 100,000 cubic yards. And just given the scope and scale of this project, it'd be, I, I would feel more comfortable knowing, you know, more specifically what that would encompass. And I know it's very difficult at this stage to determine that, but a lot of this goes into factoring construction costs and site work costs and things of that nature. And so I'll just also leave it with, with a request, and this is not really related to architectural review, but I would like to see a pro forma for this. You know, rented expenses, a development budget, sources and uses. I think it's something that we should have asked for earlier on, but now as the projects, you know, begin, becoming more refined and we have changes that include, you know, using Townsor and some of these design changes, I think it would be fair to ask for a developer pro forma. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Brian?
Thank you, Sarah. I think James and John have pretty much covered everything I've written down. I will echo what John just stated as far as the pro forma goes. We're looking at costs. And when you're talking 63% difference and differential in cut and fill and trucking, it's, I don't know where the truths are. And I'd certainly like to take a look at a pro forma on that as well. That's what I have right now.
Thank you. Jim Dietrich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing to add to what's already been said. I, I would agree with all the comments from James and John and Sean and Brian. It's, the connection to the existing trail system, I think, is quite important because it would allow the residents to have expanded outdoor space that they would have easy access to. I also have concerns about the color of the building, and that, I think, has to be nailed down thoroughly as to what color the building will be. And that will certainly impact how it is viewed from all the various angles. Because what we've seen so far, particularly from the, some of the outside groups, have made it appear that the building is going to look much different than it probably will look. But we're not really sure what it's going to look like. And thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Catherine, do you have anything?
No comments at this time, Sarah.
Thank you, Catherine. Mr. Ballmer, do you have responses to some of the issues raised by the board members?
I'll emphasize some of them. And I appreciate that James fulfilled the same role that he did in a previous hearing of doing a better job of summarizing my report than I did. Thank you, I guess. A couple points that I do want to hit on in response to that. The, I agree that the, even though, I'll go back to what I said, is that what really matters the most is what the applicant has represented. And to the, to the degree that 100,000 cubic yards is hugely different from 270,000 yards, it's kind of on the applicant, I think, in, in the sense that they're responsible for dealing with that amount of material. So I, I'm guessing that they're interested as well as we are of why there's such a huge difference. I do know that there was the discussion about material that could be used on-site. And I, I recall, although I don't have the report in front of me, but I do recall the report that mentioned 270,000 yards. I'm not convinced that that took into account of any reuse of on-site material. So that could account for some of the difference. But it's a legitimate question. It's a huge difference. And certainly, from a construction management perspective, having a high degree of confidence in where reality lands matters. I did want to say a little bit, I think James did catalog what I considered to be outstanding points or, or issues that could be included in conditions. I did want to talk a little bit about what I meant by that layered look. In the latest landscape plan, at the flattest part of the area, the highest points of below where the cul-de-sac is, there was an expansion of landscaping in that area that, to me, was helping a lot because it was mixed evergreen and deciduous. Deciduous, it helped a lot with potentially connecting with landscaping that is designated to stay in place. And my comment was that I'm not sure if it would necessitate a larger, flatter area, but a kind of similar treatment continuing right across more visible areas of the cul-de-sac. I, I thought would help that it could make a connection with that existing slope, plantings on the slope. So that's what I meant. I do think that the, even just changing the perspective view helped a bit in understanding what they are proposing. It is pretty steeply sloped. So the, the new renderings did help, but it was still a thought that I had that was worth exploring. I'll reemphasize the, the importance of the common area programming as well as what has come up tonight about, certainly from more distant perspectives, color of the building. If we did want to look at those renderings, I'd recommend that maybe the applicant's architect bring those renderings up. I'm not in a place where I can do that easily. The applicant's architect bring those renderings up. I'm not in a place where I can do that easily. Uh, and finally to another one of James' points, the sustainability narrative. Uh, it may be worth the um, applicant's time to walk us through that. It was a document that I, that I did receive. And uh, I think it might be worth everybody hearing that.
Thank you. Mr. Angler?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't, I don't know. For the record, Jeff Angler from SLV School Street representing the applicant. Is, is the board um, concluded their comments? Um, or should, are there some remaining before we speak and present?
No, I think the board has concluded their comments.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, so we appreciate Cliff's uh, additional subsequent review. I, I, I don't think. There's too much to talk through or present tonight. We certainly can show the renderings on the screen and perhaps the landscaping plan. Uh, I'm joined by Dan Riggs tonight from Embark, who's our architect of records and Leslie Fanger from Bowler, who's our landscape architect. Uh, and they can talk through, um, really, I mean, I think uh, there's a couple items each of them can talk through. But I'd like to make a couple of points. One, relative to the colors of the building. I mean, we. As Dan remembers and others that were involved, the original building we had when we started with the lip application. Had more earth tones, I think gray tones, and we were pushed by the town to do a white building. Um, but we, so we can revert back, I mean, um, you know, we, we obviously want the. Building to look as beautiful as possible, but that doesn't mean it has to be all white as shown. So I'm sure we could find some sort of condition that um, the, the building can represent some. Uh, whether it's earth tones or, I mean, we don't know exactly what, what color we're gonna do at this point in time. I mean, we're certainly not gonna do, you know, a teal building or neon yellow or something. Um, so that's a long-winded way of saying, we're, we're not uh, totally. Committed to doing the all-white building. We would be open to some sort of language. Where as part of our working drawings, we provide more specificity on the colors and share that uh, with the town. Uh, usually what we do is a mock-up, so you can actually see. Um, you know, what the facade looks like, what the colors will look like, rather than looking at it on a computer screen or a piece of paper. So we would be comfortable with that. Secondly, relative to connecting to existing trails. Uh, frankly, we have no issue with that and would be fine with the condition. Uh, it's not a news flash that the trust is not our biggest supporter. Um, so it was our presumption that they don't want any connection from our site into the existing trail path. To the extent that they're gonna prevent that or prohibit that, I don't think it makes sense for the board to condition us to do something. That the trust, who is responsible for those trails, doesn't want. Um, but I'll just say for the record that we're not opposed to doing it, but I hope the board can understand our position on that issue. Um, relative to the cut and fill, I think it's important to recognize two hundred and seventy thousand cubic yards was not our number. I mean, that was generated by the trust, not us. So it was never two hundred and seventy thousand. That was a number that was thrown out there. To try to make the impact look more severe than it is. The number that we've since submitted was prepared by our civil engineer, who I think is much more equipped to do such estimates. With that said, it is an estimate. I would suggest as we tighten up. The drawings, as we move from schematic to construction uh, details, we probably can reduce that number. Uh, maybe by as much as fifteen or twenty percent. Um, but the number was never two hundred and seventy thousand cubic yards, just for the record. So it's not like there was some dramatic change because that wasn't the number that we had introduced. But uh, you know, at this point in time, I don't think we can provide more specificity than the cut and fill analysis we submitted for the record. A month or so ago. Um, you know, as we once again move to CDs, we'll have a more exact figure. Um, we don't wanna remove any more soil than we need to from the site, so. Um, you know, certainly we're, I think, in the, our interests are aligned there, but we certainly can provide a more detailed analysis. Which we would as a condition to the building permit, but I think we've already. Been somewhat responsive to that request from the board and we submitted that preliminary cut and fill analysis, I don't know, six weeks ago, give or take. Um. And then um, you know, the, the landscaping on the cul-de-sac, we can talk about that. That's one of the things I would ask Leslie to, to speak to. I, I think where we landed around the cul-de-sac is reflective um, of the comments we heard at the last meeting. And the primary objective to have uh, four-season screening from School Street. And I think what we included there factors in all considerations relative to existing topography. Relative to species, relative to longevity, relative to um, height at, at planting, relative to how fast they grow. So I think what we've, what we've included on the um. On the, on the plans is, I mean, we think works, but we'll, I'll let Leslie speak to it one more time um, tonight. And then lastly, relative to Mr. Ballmer's concerns about uh, some programming for small children. We, we don't take exception to that. I mean, we haven't fully vetted exactly, but if there was a condition that we needed to provide. You know, a play structure for toddlers or, I mean, I don't know if you wanted to get into the specificity of, you know, specificity of. Children five to eleven or whatever it may be, but you know, once again, as part of our building permit set, we'll have all the details. Uh, relative to the exact programming, but I, I just want the board to know that we don't take exception or, or have any issue. To having some programming specifically designed to smaller children. And, and we think in that nature-themed play area probably is the most logical location. Because it has the uh, closest and most direct access to the building. Um, so with that said, I just wanted to hit on those highlights. I, I don't think we have a lot more to share. I would ask Dan. And Leslie just to talk for a few minutes, you know, about the, about the representations and a couple of the points. That Cliff raised and then we're happy to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, I can go first, um, share my screen if you don't mind. Again, Dan Riggs with Embark, we're the architects on the project. Uh, so starting in, in no particular order, I guess I'll um, jump into just building color and. Uh, as Jeff had mentioned, you know, we, we had started with a little bit more variety of, of color choices in the building. Um, we still have quite a bit of material variety, but this is something that we're happy to explore as we bring the drawings uh, into more. Levels of detail and nuance. Um, and, and can we introduce other, other colors into the project? Um, so. Absolutely, something would be, would be welcome to um, to explore uh, as a condition of the project. Um, so you know, currently we do have. A mixture of clapboard and um, a lot of trim elements, shake, shingles, beadboard. Uh, or board and batten, um, rather, and we've made some inroads to, to including some more natural materials like this. Uh, wood look facade here that helps to kind of segment the building into smaller pieces. And I think that's what was. Uh, missing from the MECT um, renderings that were provided. To jump over to um, the rendering, so I can bring you through the latest. Uh, renderings that were provided from a ground level perspective. Um, so uh, this, this, this farm, or this uh, drawing is essentially created from uh, across the street at the, at the uh, farm um, location, so. Looking directly into the site entrance um, with the pump house building and bus shelter here with uh, some attention we paid to. Screening the generator, including the rain garden with the, the variety planting, so. Uh, could create a really robust um, entry view into the project. Um, there was some comments about including overhead power lines and things like that. In, in this view, we, we do have a series of. Overhead power lines, but they're deeper into the site. Uh, so from the street, it actually, the power's running underground for the first segment of that uh, sequence. Uh, and there's an overhead power line that's obscured by the, the, the hill in this view um, towards the rear here. Um, and we've also revised this to include a little bit more detail in, in coordination with the work. Uh, that Leslie and her team have been doing, um, showing the, the meadow grasses and kind of more um, natural uh. Treatment of the, of the hill slope uh, above the entry, um, the entry here. And to follow that with a second. Image that we provided, so this is looking uh, south along School Street. Uh, again, here's the entrance to the, to the project. And we included a number of elements that were missing from the original uh, renderings in this submission, so. Including things like the hydrants, um, building signage, uh, stop signs, uh, some additional striping um, within the project. Uh, and, and again, we, we do have the overhead power lines which are um, back here in the. In the rendering, they're, they're admittedly a little distant in the view, but that's, it's accurate to the location that they would be in the site plan. Um, as well as this power pole that was um, part of the public, uh, part of the public way. Uh, and is existing. So a few other things that were noted, so we did add a lot of environmental um. Pieces, so we have greater than one-to-one bike parking at this moment and we added the ten EV um, spaces. A few of the other items that are included in our sustainability narrative. Uh, I couldn't actually just read from that, it's fairly brief. Um, so just to read from that sustainability narrative. The town of Manchester by the sea has adopted the uh, Massachusetts Stretch Energy Code. So this project will be designed to those stringent standards. Uh, it will also include high-efficiency HVAC systems, uh, reduced lighting power intensity. Enhanced lighting controls, that usually means on-demand lighting, so it turns off when you, when you leave the room. Uh, high-efficiency domestic water heating, and, and those are all things that. You know, part of living in a mixed income development that tenants um, demand us to have. Uh, high R-value, so high insulation uh, windows and walls. Um, also usually explore uh, Energy Star on these projects. Uh, have programmable thermostats to again, reduce the, the constant uh, heat energy demands. And the roofing would have, would be light colored, so um, very reflective and reducing the albedo uh, and the heat island effect of the building. Uh, and again, uh, greater than one-to-one bicycle parking and uh. Ten electrical uh, vehicle charging stations uh, would be included with the project, so. With that, I think I can hand it back over to Leslie, unless you have any additional questions, happy to um, answer anything else, but. Um, I'll hand it over to Leslie. Leslie, do you want me to keep the renderings up or you wanna jump to your side?
Yeah, if you wanna keep that rendering right there, that'd be great. Thanks. Um, I think this represents uh, the condition at the top of the slope by the cul-de-sac. Uh, we are showing arborvitae's, I think um. As the project goes into construction documents, we will look to increase the width of the flat area at the top of the cul-de-sac. That um, may allow for additional uh, plant materials so that we can achieve that layering effect that um. Cliff and John have mentioned. I think at the, at the base of the arborvitae's, we can kind of close those gaps with some um. Other evergreen shrubs and trees. See, um, I think if.
I can go to the next or the previous.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and I, I think this. Rendering really helps to show just how much of the existing vegetation is being retained. Um, you know, we really worked hard to. Make the topography such that we um, used retaining walls to reduce the amount of uh, cutting of the existing. Forest, um, especially as you're going up the, the driveway. Um, the, the retaining walls themselves, um, although they are fairly high, um, they will be softened with a combination of. Uh, different kinds of plant materials such as forsythia and um, vines that will kind of drape down over the, the retaining walls to help soften the look of them. And I think um, Dan's team has really done an excellent job of representing how this will look um, after perhaps. You know, three or five years of, of plant growth. And also having the rain garden right at the base of the, the slope in front of the um. The bus shelter and pump house really helps to give it more of a naturalized feel and uh, enhance the view from the road.
I'll, I'll stop sharing my screen so you can do the rest of your.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm having um, technical difficulties, so I had to kind of move and I, I, if you could go to the uh, landscape plan, that would be helpful.
Um, let me.
I'm sorry. I can just keep talking about some of the comments. Um, the addition or the increase in the height of the fence adjacent to the open space area. Um, that open space area that we're calling it a, a multi-use open space because it really is intended to be um. Utilized in whatever way uh, the residents uh, wish to use it. For instance, if they wanna play lawn ball, you know, bocce. Um, uh, horseshoes, cornhole, um, toss a frisbee. It's, it's not really intended to be a um. Finally programmed area. It's just intended to be an open space that can be used. However, the residents, if they wanna have a large party and need to put up a big tent, they can put it there. Um, and the nature-themed play area definitely will have uh, age-appropriate play equipment that will have a, a nature theme, so. Play equipment has really come a long way in the past ten years. There's, there's so many different opportunities to introduce. Um, learning about nature in the play elements themselves. So that's the, that's the theory behind the nature play theme. Um, and there'll be things like, you know, swings or just, just swings, things like that. Um, so there'll be plenty of, of opportunities for kids to, to play in a safe environment. We're locating it on the building side of the driveway because, you know, it's, it's a safer access. They, the young children won't be needing to cross the street or cross the driveway in order to access it. And it's um, being closed with a, a four-foot decorative fence to keep the kids from kind of wandering um, from that space. And I think um, I've missed anything? I think that's, those are the, the main points. Um. Think we're, we're doing a pretty good job of like softening the view from School Street and um. From Old School Street, we're proposing to put some evergreen trees down at the. Property line at School Street and the property. And we'll kind of strategically place those evergreen trees such that it's closing visual gaps between Old School Street. Up the hill uh, towards the, the site. Um, there's a fairly thick layer of existing vegetation to remain. It's a mature forest with lots of understory growth. Um, so during the times when the majority of people like to go and um, access the cultivation area. Uh, it should be um, almost uh, impenetrable view up toward the site from that area.
One comment that Cliff had, uh, I believe um, relative to some details around the bus shelter. Um, you know, we haven't fully designed that. I think what we represent on this rendering is, is, is pretty close. But we certainly will, you know, ensure that that is, you know, fully ADA compliant and meets other, you know, building code requirements, so. Uh, I, I would expect, I mean, if the board wanted to condition uh, that, that would be totally acceptable. But you know, as part of uh, you, you, meeting all our building code requirements, we would do that as a standard. Uh, course of business, but we just haven't fully designed uh, that uh, to this point in time. So with that said, Madam Chair, I don't know if the board has any other questions relative to. Um, either the architecture or landscape architecture, uh, would be happy to answer those at this time.
Um, I'll go around the board. Um, James, do you have any questions?
No, I think uh, all the presenters tonight have done a very good job of clarifying uh, questions we had and uh, I'm fully satisfied.
Uh, John?
I do not have any further questions relative to um, what we just discussed uh, with the architecture review this time.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
Uh, again, I'm, I'm good at this point in time. I reserve the right to come back to it though.
Uh, Sean?
I'm good at this time.
Uh, Jim?
No further questions this time, Madam Chair.
Catherine?
No questions, Sarah. Thank you.
No questions, Sarah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then at this point, I will open it up to the public and the question, the comments tonight will be restricted to the architectural element of this project. Becky Jakes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Becky Jakes, 22 Forster Road. And I, I was involved with the lip and I'm, I'm just confused. I, I don't remember us stating that we wanted it white, but that's, that's another point. I have a couple of questions regarding the path. And I didn't hear a lot of comment on that, but the path to School Street. Is that something that would be overseen by the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board? Or at least adhere to their guidelines?
At a prior meeting, we did put in a vote on a condition to make it ADA accessible.
Okay, it's, it's because I know that they, they speak to a number of, of criteria. And just when I heard path, it didn't wasn't very clear on that from my perspective.
We can make sure that the condition has the appropriate details.
Thank you. And then regarding guidelines, are there guidelines to the heights of the retaining walls that, that SLV is looking at? And any guidelines in terms of having to have fencing or other ways to prevent people from getting hurt on those?
Mr. Angler, can you speak to that?
I can try. I mean, ultimately, the plans for the retaining walls are needs are going to be stamped by a structural engineer, which I am not. There'll be no, there's no guidelines per se, but they are going to have to be fully engineered and fully compliant and, you know, meet all building codes. We do not anticipate having any fencing on the retaining walls shown at the front of the building because there's really not going to be any public in that, in that particular location. There are some retaining walls more towards the back of the site, which, which they'll be fencing to restrict access there. But we, we don't anticipate having any fencing in the areas that we've represented on the renderings because there's not going to be any public access there.
Thank you for answering those. And it, it certainly does appear to be much more appealing to look at with the different architectural elements of both of textures, woods and color. I did also want to ask regarding the use of forsythia. That is, I think, considered by many as an invasive plant. Will you be focusing more on native plants?
I'll let Leslie answer that. I, I can assure you, we're not going to be doing any invasive species. And to the extent that we can feature, you know, native plantings, we will. Leslie, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I, I can see where people might think that forsythia is perhaps a, it, it wanders a bit. It colonizes, you know, the, the little shoots go down. They, they make roots and they kind of, but they don't tend to be carried by birds and dropped, you know, the seeds and then take over the world like knotweed would. Where it would certainly be very easy to use nothing but natives. I, I mentioned forsythia because it's such a great, big, you know, it has a lot, it's a big shrub and it's got a lot of wildlife value for nesting birds and so forth. And it's kind of a thick shrub. So it prevents, you know, anyone from wandering through it. And it's really pretty in the spring. But we can certainly take that into consideration when we're really fine tuning the landscape design.
I'm sorry, is this real life that we're talking about forsythia right now?
Sarah, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Are you finished, Becky?
I am. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your
Is there another member of the public that wants to raise their hand and ask a question? Dave Combe? Mr. Combe, did you want to unmute yourself and speak?
Hi, Dave Combe, One Norton's Point, Manchester. I'm just wondering, in the upper meadow kind of area, just below the arvites, is there any chance that the trees that will be existing there can be preserved and not cut down and then replanted in that way?
I, I can answer that, Jeff. So the nature of the grading won't allow any of the existing vegetation to remain in that area. The intent is to have it become sort of a wild flower meadow. And then through successional growth over time, it'll have trees and, and low shrubs. And that will mature, mature over time.
So you're not planning to, to, you're not planning to cut it. You're going to grow sort of a natural area, a meadow, and then let the, let trees come up when they come up rather than actually plant trees in that area?
Yes, that's, that's our intent.
I have another question about the, the, the bus shelter. Is, is there public transportation? You know, for, to allow people to commute back and forth to the, to the site?
There's no current public transportation and the children are within the walking zone of school.
So what is the public, what is the, is that a bus? Was that a bus stop that you had in the foreground right off School Street?
Mr. Angler?
Sir, Madam Chair, I, I don't want the public thinking I'm rude. I just have sometimes jumped the gun. So when you call on me, I'll answer the question. I don't want to just jump right in. The, the bus shelter is, in fact, designed for students at the development. There's no public bus line that's stopping in front of the development. It's more catered towards specifically school age children. Hopefully that answers your question.
Anything else, Mr. Combe? Carrie Almog? Please state your name and address.
My name is Carrie Almog. I live at 69 Bridge Street here in Manchester. And I just have a few things I'd like to say. One thing, Mr. Angler, you 125% are rude for invading our town or trying to for financial gain only. Also, I find it appalling that we are talking about landscaping when you are talking about tearing down conservation land and ruining the environment and the wildlife that live there. And also speaking about the children who would be supposedly walking to school. There are no sidewalks that would bring them all the way to school. This whole situation upsets me greatly and is a disgrace to the town.
Thank you. The town has committed to extend the sidewalk out to the development based on its complete streets policy.
All the way to school? Yeah.
Well, there's a sidewalk all the way to Route 128 southbound ramp now. So it has to be extended from there up to this development. There's a sidewalk all along School Street.
Thank you so much. So let's just concentrate on my other points. A disgrace, disgrace.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak on the architecture or landscaping? Mr. Combe, do you have another question?
Yes, I, I have a question about the landscaping that would take into account runoff into that really fragile area of the conservation land. So what, what is, what, what is in place right now to assure that that, the Saw Brook Mill swamp area and the, and the brook itself isn't isn't polluted with, with, with runoff, storm runoff, et cetera.
Can somebody respond to that? Mr. Angler?
Yeah, I mean, that's more civil engineering than architecture, but I can assure you that that part of our program has been intensely scrutinized by the town's peer review consultant. And the program and plan factors in our plantings and our, you know, future design condition and the like. So that has been carefully contemplated and considered and factored into the calculations.
And, and so do, does, I, I, I'm coming kind of new into this review process. So is that all available for us to look at? And has that all been approved? And how you're going to mitigate the, the runoff and any kind of nutrients or, or pollutants that's going to go into Saw, Saw Brook Mill?
All of the documentation on this project is up on the town website under 40B. And there are various sections. One of those sections is engineering. And that includes the information on the storm, stormwater drainage.
Okay, I'll have a, I'll have a look.
Okay, yeah. It, it, there's, there's, you know, a proposal and then there's a peer review and back and forth. And there should be a final document out there regarding
And, and has the zoning board approved all that? Or is it, is it just still up and, up, up for discussion?
We have obtained, we believe we've obtained all the information we need on the civil engineering. We have not yet formulated all of the conditions and we have not yet made decisions in all the ways.
Thank you.
We, we, we need to obtain all of the information from the public and the applicant before we close the public hearing, which is currently scheduled to be closed on July 27. Once we close that public hearing, we cannot accept any more information from the public or the applicant. So that's our, that's what we're concentrating on right now is making sure we have the information we need. And we're going through it one section at a time. So we've done the civil engineering. This is the architecture. We will be circling back around on environmental again next week. Not next week, July 13. And we've done traffic and public safety. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Jeff?
Jeff Cohen, 15 Vine Street, Manchester. How many towns or cities in the United States experience an instant population increase of more than 5%? That's what this would do. I did the research. The answer is almost none. This, this Shingle Hill project would, would do that to the town of Manchester. It would instantly increase Manchester's population by approximately 7%. Of the 350 cities and towns in Massachusetts, only 40 experienced population growth of more than just 1% in any single year since 2010. But this project is trying to impose an instant increase of 7%. That 7% population increase due to SLV was meticulously estimated by the unbiased Manchester Financial Committee in multiple detailed studies over the past two years. This project is inappropriate, unmanageable, and a huge burden on Manchester in many ways. A few of the obvious being water, poor fiscal irresponsibility, and suddenly overflowing classrooms in both our high school and elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, under the 40B hearing process, we cannot consider financial impacts to the town and we cannot consider the impact on our school system due to the state regulation. We wish we could, but unfortunately we can't. Sarah Pierce?
Hi, thank you. Yes, Sarah Pierce, 9 Friends Street. I wondered if someone could just describe this pathway for safety reasons, because I'm hearing that the project would be within walking distance for the kids to the elementary and middle and high school. What, what does that look like? I did walk through the property and with the grades and the slopes, is this something that is lining the, like beside the driveway? Who's keeping it up? If it's in, if someone doesn't have a car because they're in low income housing or affordable housing, whatever you want to refer to it as. What is this going to look like as a path, I guess? Or how would someone easily use that? Young children carrying backpacks, whatnot. I'm just curious what this path is going to look like and how you're going to traverse it.
Thank you. Mr. Angler?
I, I think there's been and, and maybe through our own fault, and I apologize, some confusion between the discussion on the sidewalk and a, and a quote unquote path. The path is an informal, more walking path with connectivity to the existing trail system. That is not to be confused with a fully ADA compliant sidewalk, which, as the board knows, was voted on, I don't know if it was at the last hearing or two hearings ago, which would be built to School Street. Once we get to School Street, it's our understanding the town intends on building a sidewalk in School Street. But the sidewalk will be fully ADA compliant. And yes, affordable tenants actually do have cars. I know it might be hard for some people to believe that, but they're hardworking people just like you and me. So I, hopefully that answers that question. And also, I'm not sure if the member of the public is aware, we, we submitted a pretty detailed fiscal impact analysis over a year ago. And this project, even considering all the school age children, which is not a huge amount. It's shown that multifamily apartments do not generate large numbers of students, is in fact fiscally positive. And also, as the information that we're receiving from the municipal departments and their own consultants will show, the town, in fact, will have plenty of water and sewer capacity. And we've been getting that information in over the last week or two. So respectfully, I think some of the assertions and, and things that are being said about the project just aren't accurate. So thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully that answered the question about the path and the sidewalk.
Madam Chair, actually, it, it doesn't answer my question. And I would just like to make a comment regarding Mr. Angler's comment about people in affordable housing. I volunteered for Wellspring. I've obviously know what real affordable housing provides. And many of us know that that's not it. No one who is in a position of needing affordable housing is going to be able to afford any of your units, affordable or not. My point is, you said there is a, is this sidewalk going to the end of School Street? How are these kids and, and then going up your hill, your driveway? How did it, how does that connect? I don't understand. Is that going all the way up? Maybe I misunderstood that.
The town is extending the sidewalk
Up School Street.
On the east side of School Street
Right.
To the development. And then the developer is creating an ADA sidewalk along the side of the driveway.
Okay, I was not clear to where the actual sidewalk from School Street up to the development went.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Manchester Essex Conservation Trust, please state your name and address.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Patrice Murphy with the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. I think tonight brings with it a trifecta with the applicant's team, the peer reviewer architect, and the community finally agreeing that the building needs to be hidden, softened, and naturalized. In fact, an invisibility cloak is about the only way that the building massing in scale will fit the area that is already a perfectly naturalized area or fit within the current and permanent land use in the surrounding area. or fit within the current and permanent land use in the surrounding area. The permanent land use is conservation. As for the connections to the existing trails, we have not had any conversations with the applicant's team. They have not asked us anything. But I would ask them if they plan to have people come down the 20 to 30 foot wall behind the stormwater system through the wetlands, through the vernal pools, or across the roadway. The obvious areas for connection are either privately owned or owned by the town of Manchester. So that is not really an MECT issue. Uh, and finally, the, uh, the, uh, difference between the 250,000 cubic yards of material to be, to be blasted was the estimate that MECT had provided. But even the reduction to 100,000, which people seem to be very impressed with, using the applicant's own letter, that is 3,850 truck trips or an estimated 60 trucks per day for a three month period during the initial site work. And that is the applicant's own estimate for the, what's called the reduction in the amount of material that's going to be removed. Uh, and finally, I really urge the applicant to stick to native species. And at our prior discussion, I asked questions about plans for herbicides, rodenticides, invasive species plans for an area that's going to be ripped wide open for years on end. And now we're hearing it's going to be naturalized. Well, that is a huge issue waiting for invasive plants like tree of heaven. And we haven't heard any plans. We haven't heard how they plan to prevent, uh, the invasives from taking over. So I would urge the ZVA to get those plans, not conditions, but to get those plans from the applicant before the close of the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Co, Co-Clan will hear from you once more and then that will be it. I'm going to leave.
Thank you. Jeff Koschen. Uh, Mr. Angler just claimed verbally that the project will be financially positive and won't add many students. That's just a verbal comment on his part. The Manchester FinCom created a detailed study that actually concluded that the project would be a fiscal burden on the town and would add a number of students that would overflow the existing classroom capacity.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, as the board knows, we submit, it wasn't verbal. We submitted a very detailed fiscal impact analysis last year, so it's not a subjective statement.
But it was.
I believe it's.
I'm sorry. I'm not going to get into a conversation regarding the fiscal impact because that is not something that the zoning board of appeals may consider. That was appropriate during the LIM. It's not appropriate during the 40B hearing. We cannot consider it, unfortunately. I wish we could, we can't.
My apologies.
Uh, Sarah Pierce, do you have one more question? Or did you not put your hand down?
Oh, sorry. No, I don't have another question. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Carrie Almog, do you have one more question?
I just, I just have one more statement. Thank you so very much. Um, I just want us all to be thinking about, which we all know, um, who live here in town, is that we need to think about the wildlife that live in this area. And we all know we have an abundance of coyotes that live here. And this will just push more coyotes out into our area where our homes are. Just another thing to consider is wildlife.
I'm sorry, that's not related to architectural. We will be discussing the wildlife habitat study and vernal pool study on July 13.
Okay, my apologies.
You should comment at that point. Okay?
Thank you.
Um, Daniel Hill?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. Uh, Dan Hill for the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. Um, I, I really just had more of a, a process question than anything else. I, I, I do, did find, uh, the comment about persiphia, uh, kind of striking given the really much bigger issues that are still outstanding in this, in this project. And, um, I, I heard Mr. Angler just comment that there, that information on sewer and water capacity has been coming in for the last couple of weeks. But all, all I've seen is a water capacity analysis. I haven't seen anything on sewer. Um, and the water capacity analysis was actually addressed from Tita and Howard to the developer.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hill, we're not going to discuss that tonight. That's going to be an agenda item on a future, at a future meeting. We do not have sufficient information to discuss that.
Can you tell us when that's going to be discussed so we can be prepared to address that at a future meeting?
That's my plan to ask Mr. Angler. But that's, you know, we haven't gotten to our conditions yet. Mr. Angler, do you know when the municipal feasibility studies are going to be available?
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding, um, that we've been, you know, as directed, working with, um, the town and DPW. Uh, I think the data has been produced by the town's consultants. And, uh, we hired somebody to, uh, do the sewer flow capacity as well, with, which Mr. Hill had pushed for. Um, so we should have the benefit of, uh, a synthesized analysis, I would say, in the next, uh, two weeks. Carlton Quinn from Allen and Major, um, is, is with us tonight. And he is running point for us on that exercise. And should be able to, uh, hopefully provide some specificity on when we would have the benefit of that analysis.
Mr. Quinn, do you have a timeframe?
You're muted, Carlton.
I'm muted, yeah. Uh, Carlton Quinn, Allen Major Associates. Um, we have the final set of data in today. Um, so we'll probably need about a week to crunch the numbers, come up with a summary memo. And, um, so I would say two weeks is an appropriate timetable to have it submitted.
So we can put it on the agenda for our July 13th meeting?
Yes.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Madam, Madam Chair, is, is somebody from the town going to be peer reviewing what Mr. Quinn submits?
We're working with DPW on it. Yes. I mean, we haven't seen anything yet. You're, you're pushing us, Mr. Hill. Um, we are going through the process and our DPW is involved in the process.
Okay, I'm just concerned about the timing. That's all, Madam Chair. You have to close the hearing July 23rd, so.
We're doing what we can. If we don't have sufficient information, that impacts what we can do. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Co, do you have one more question?
Yes, I, I, um, I'd like to address the sustainability aspect of that one page report. I, I thought that was pitiful, um, that there, it was just a single page long of what you're going to do. Um, I'd like to know about what, whether there's any, uh, talk about, um, addressing, you know, solar energy or geothermal energy to sort of offset. And, and, you know, any other, any other things that can offset, um, um, carbon and, and, and be more sustainable? I, I just thought that was like incredibly, a small list of sustainability items on the, on the list. Is there anything, um, other than what, what you showed? Or is there any consideration for, um, uh, trying to use green energy to power the, the, the housing unit?
Um, Mr. Angler?
Um, everything's under consideration. We just haven't gotten to that level of detail. We're trying to figure out if we have a permit and what's going to be asked of us by the zoning board. But in terms of really designing what's going into this building, hiring MEPs, doing all the mechanicals, it's premature to do that. So we're, the items that you mentioned are very much important to us. We, we, as is customary on any of these projects at this point in time, we just don't have, we have not designed it to that level of detail.
When would we get, when would we get to see that? Like, I mean, when, when do we get to find out about?
Prior to a building permit. I can tell you that for certain.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other members of the public have a question with respect to the architectural or landscaping plans? Okay, with that, I will move on to a few outstanding zoning waiver requests. Well, there's one more hand raised. Gar Morse?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman. I just have a simple question, very easy.
Could you restate your name and address?
I'm Gar Morse. I live on 11 Jersey Lane. And I have a simple question, not for the applicant, just for Mr. Angler personally. Can I ask Mr. Angler personally a question?
You have to come through the chair.
Ma'am, can I ask the, uh, Mr. Angler personally a question?
Your question needs to be directed to the chair and then I can take a response from Mr. Angler if it's appropriate.
Okay, thanks. Um, so my question is, in Mr. Angler's, let me, let me, I can do this. How about? Um, in Mr. Angler's view, is this project safe for a nine-year-old kid walking down the street and going to school? It's a pretty simple question.
Mr. Angler, do you want to respond to that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, listen, we permitted a million, is any project built in the city of Boston or Brookline or Cambridge with a million cars around an urban setting safe? Of cour-, yeah. I mean, we've had your fire chief look at it. He said it's safe. The access we're providing to School Street is fully compliant with state building codes and ADA requirements. What the town does in School Street, I presume will be fully compliant. So yeah, it's 100% safe.
Thanks. That's good. Glad to hear that from you.
Thank you. I will now move on to conditions. Um, one of the items that we had deferred before, and I don't believe we have yet received the answer to this. Um, and maybe your architect can tell us, was the building height. Um, and one of the questions I asked at a prior meeting was with respect to the structures on top of the deck, um, roof deck. And how high were those? And how did that impact the total height of the building? I believe there's an elevator that goes up to the roof deck. So there's a structure to encase the elevator.
Yep. So Madam Chair, we had, uh, I, I instructed our architect to look at that. And I'll, I'll ask Dan to follow up with our interpretation. Um, but what we may ask, if it's allowed, is if we can go to the building inspector. Because frankly, we're having a little bit of a challenge, um, understanding how Manchester, through the zoning bylaws, uh, is interpreting height in this building. Most of the language, quite honestly, is more geared towards, you know, traditional single-family houses. Dan, if you want to talk about your interpretation of what we've read, and then if we can get clarification from the building inspector. Cause we're, quite honestly, Madam Chair, we don't know if we need a waiver. I mean, the building is the building as we've represented. And if the building inspector says based on what we've provided is consistent with the zoning, then we won't need a waiver. Um, but we, we need he or she to opine on that. Dan, do you want to talk a little bit about, you know, what you've researched?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Jeff. I, I think you hit on the majority of it. I think the, uh, the, the key point is, is defining, um, how they count number of stories and how they interpret, uh, existing grade and proposed grade. The bylaws are written, um, such that the height of the building is measured from the existing grade. Um, so from that interpretation, even with the additional, uh, height of the elevator that goes to the roof, we're under the 35 feet, but we would exceed the two and a half stories. And we would, that would put us at three stories above that grade measurement. Um, or four stories, depending on how they interpret that measurement. Uh, so getting some clarification on where grade is considered and how to interpret that zoning bylaw and that height definition would, uh, would clarify that, that issue really quickly. But it is, as Jeff, uh, mentioned, it's, it's mainly written around how a gable for a single-family building is, uh, is, is built. So it's a little bit murky, but, um, I think it can be cleared up by a quick conversation with the building inspector.
Okay, because we would be interested in the total height in addition to the number of stories.
Right, but you're interested in the tot-, you're interested in the total height as calculated by the Manchester zoning bylaw. And that's what we're trying to endeavor to find out.
Right, well, the only thing that's allowed above a roof to exceed 35 feet is a spire. And you've got structures up there.
I can share my.
Madam Chair, we'll, we'll, we'll reach out to the building inspector if, if you allow us. And, uh, we'll have a conversation and come back with the more definitive conclusion.
Thank you. Um, the other accessory structures, we haven't done the municipal water and sewer yet. The other one is the signage, which you've asked for a waiver from the three foot by three foot sign. Um, you gave us a depiction a number of weeks ago, could have been a month ago, of your, I think your explanation talked about six feet by six feet. The depiction you've given us is four feet by five feet. Um, is that what you would be building, the four feet by five feet?
Yeah, we would be comfortable with the sign consistent of, of, to that, to what we showed you from our, our project constituent, both in look and feel and size.
Okay, so let me ask the board. I mean, the, the landscape pictures we received, the most recent ones do show the sign in the pictures. Um, so I want to ask the board if we've discussed this before and we weren't, we wanted to see what it would look like, to see if we were comfortable. Um, so I want input from the board whether we're okay with this four foot by five foot sign shows a sanctuary. James?
Yeah, four by five is a good compromise. Six by six, it feels a little too large. Three by three, which I think our bylaw is, is really too small at that visibility access from School Street. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the four by five that's being proposed.
John?
Yeah, I think the four by five is better than the six by six. I had a concern with that. So I'm okay with the revised sign.
Brian?
Yeah, the, uh, I think there were two items that we were concerned about was the size of the sign and how it was going to be lit. Four by five, uh, is, uh, a good compromise, but I'd like to know how.
How would the board like it to be lit? I mean, we can backlight the sign or we can just do more traditional uplighting, um, you know, underneath that shines up directly on the sign, which you customarily see throughout Manchester and various applications.
We, we don't want the light to go above the sign.
I would be comfortable with more of that, with a backward sign myself.
This is Catherine. Is down lighting not an option? Light down on the sign to just show the sign?
Um, it's probably an option, Catherine. Um, you know, we haven't fully designed the sign, obviously, but, um.
Okay.
Um, Sean, your thoughts?
Um, I'm fine with the three by five. I mean, I'd prefer to stay with, uh, the bylaw, but I also have concern about the lighting on that. I think it needs to be a down light to be, uh, dark sky compliant.
Uh, Jim DeJure?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, a three by five sign, I feel is appropriate considering the size of the structure and the intent. This is not a residence or an individual dentist office, for example. Uh, backlighting would be my choice. Or downlighting, either one is fine. And before, I don't know how to work this in, Madam Chair, but I, I thought of something that I'd like to address to our architectural peer reviewer, it just came up when some, we were looking at some other renderings. I don't know whether that's appropriate, that's your call, but if, if it is, I would like to raise the question just to clear it.
Okay.
Okay. And this would be to our consultant, excuse me.
Mr. Bommer?
Mr. Bommer, yes, if he's still on. I'm not sure how tall or how high these retaining walls will be, but it was expressed that there will be nothing to prevent anyone, including a child, from approaching the edge of the retaining wall and perhaps falling off. I do know in town, from my experience with the building inspector, that if you have anything, I believe, that is more than four feet tall, you have to either have a fence to prevent someone from falling off the side or some other means. Has, has that ever, has that been considered in your review?
Yes, thanks for bringing that up, and as, as usual, the devil is in the details. The, the rules that govern what's code compliant with retaining walls are both related to the height of the retaining wall, but also what is happening in the vicinity of the retaining wall. So a retaining wall that is out in the landscape, that's not publicly accessible, there are no walkways at the top or the bottom of the retaining wall, are looked at differently from a retaining wall that, you know, where there are hardscape, where there are hardscape elements that could be hazardous. So I think your question is a really good one, I think, without knowing precisely, I think Mr. Engler's representation that the renderings don't show any kind of fencing or restraint at the top of the walls, I think that could very well be completely code compliant. I do think, though, that understanding how people are actually likely to move around the site could, you know, could lead to a different conclusion about what's prudent versus code compliant. It's a legitimate issue. At a dead minimum, the walls need to be code compliant, I think there's a pretty good chance that the walls as depicted are code compliant without railings. But I think it's in everybody's best interest if we're assured that that's really truly unlikely circulation path. It's a good point, it's a really good point, and they are tall walls, and nobody would like to fall from those walls, for sure.
Looks like a great sledding hill to me.
That would be a rude surprise if you slid down that hill, so I think the, you know, it's, you know, it's really, it's on the, the applicant to confirm code compliance, it's absolute, the lowest possible bar. But beyond that, you know, there are going to be a lot of people potentially living on this hill, so I, I think you'd want to have a higher degree of confidence in what the code allows.
Thank you. Are you, to answer your question, Jim?
Yes, I would, I'll reserve my comments, I think they will be worthy of a condition when we get to that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would, I would point out that there could be a lot of options, it might be short of full guard rail compliant, so they might not be visually as, as prominent. As you've noticed, there's a lot of landscaping embedded in those terraces in the retaining wall. Could, you could incorporate into the landscaping plan some kind of protective railing that wouldn't be visually obtrusive, I think.
My thoughts entirely, I think the architects are very clever and I'm sure the, between the landscape and the physical architecture, they can come up with a way to prevent particularly younger children who may simply be wandering around and wander over the wall. We have an obligation to make sure it is safe. Thank you, good point.
Could I make one, one more comment about just the previous comment, which was about building height? I just wanted to say I support the, the notion of speaking directly with the building inspector, particularly because, you know, their existing grades or post-development grades or pre-development grades, this is an unusual project in the sense that the post-development grades are very different from predevelopments, so I don't think your code is fine-grained enough to really figure that out, I think it really is the code official that needs to make the call on whether that's a required waiver or not.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, James.
Getting back to the sign and just as a matter of clarity.
Yes.
The original sign was six feet by six feet.
Yeah.
The town zoning board sign size is three by three.
Yeah.
Several of our members have talked about a four by five sign.
Yes, that's-
Two of the members have on the record saying a three by, excuse me, a three by five sign. I just want to be clear, we're all talking about the same thing, what we're talking about is a four-foot by five-foot sign.
Correct, which is the depiction we received of, that says sanctuary.
Yes, just remember it said three foot by five.
Yeah, I think that was a misstatement by Jim.
I think you are correct.
Thank you.
Getting back to the waiver, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the waiver under section 6.4.3.2 signage to allow a four-foot wide by five-foot tall sign, which is either downlit, dark sky compliant, or backlit. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
James seconds it. Any more discussion? I will take a roll call vote. James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. And I believe that is all of the conditions we can consider at this point until we have information on the municipal water and sewer, because that's talking about accessory buildings that are related to those projects. So I think that's all we can cover tonight. Does anybody on the board have anything else they thought we should be covering in this public hearing tonight? Okay. With that, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing to July 13, 2022, at 7 o'clock PM in a virtual meeting. And we will discuss the environmental, which include, which will include the wildlife habitat study. We will consider the connection to the municipal water and sewer and consider some environmental waivers and conditions if we're able to do that on the same night as that environment. Does that make sense? Are you okay with that, Mr. Engler?
It, it does make sense and we'll bring all the appropriate, you know, technical team that we have to that meeting that evening, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Jim seconds, take a roll call vote. James? John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Jim?
Approved.
Sarah approves. We will now go on to administrative matters.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Engler.
Nice to meet all of you.
Thank you. Do we have minutes to review? Did anybody review any minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Monday, 4/27.
The 4/27 minutes?
Correct.
Any changes, comments?
I'm good.
That was good.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 27, 2022, do I have a second?
I second.
Sean seconds. Any discussion? Take a roll call vote. James?
Approved.
John? Brian? Sean?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Sarah approves, thank you. Is there anything else we need? Anything else that I didn't anticipate that we should discuss?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Did we approve meeting minutes of April 13?
Yeah.
We have, okay. Thank you.
Do you have changes?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you have an edit?
I, I do, it's very brief, it's very minor.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll correct it.
Page two, last paragraph, it was a comment I made, and it says, interested in additional, and there's three words missing, it should say, in additional information and specifications around the retaining walls. It was just an abbreviated sentence that didn't make it all the way into the report.
Interested in additional information and what was the next word?
Specifications.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? The, the sustainability memo was circulated, and there was another memo with it, did people not receive that? There were two memos.
Where they sent out, sir?
Long time ago.
I'll find them and redistribute.
But what was the second one on, do you remember, Gail?
No.
Oh, okay.
I, and, and I, if, if I'm thinking, if, if it's the same document I'm, I'm thinking about, I believe there was also a third item there.
I think, was it part of the things sent out June 1st?
It may be, I mean-
On June 1st, we received about 10 different documents, including the updated landscape plans.
I think that's correct.
I have all the stuff from June 1st if people want me to resend it.
There, that is-
Yeah.
This is Sue, that is, that is, you're right, it is in that group on June 1st, it was in that email, yep.
Okay.
On June 1st.
It was you, it, you had to get it via a link.
That's correct. The link was embedded in the email.
I'll send them around. Hopefully I'll be able to send them, hopefully they won't be too big.
Thank you.
I downloaded them, yeah.
If you send it from your town email, you can, the town email can handle bigger documents.
Yeah, right. Mine's so overloaded, I can't send anything.
Okay. I had a problem sending, sending things to you and a couple of other members and had to break it up.
I'll just thank Comcast. This meeting ran longer than I expected, sorry. I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
And Sarah? Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, good night.
You have all until July 13th.
Okay, wow, two weeks.
Enjoy it.
It's a vacation.
I know, what are we gonna do?
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah.
All right, have a good night.